Committee meeting of Monday, April 24th, 2023 at 6:10 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, 1 Metcalf Square, Winthrop, Mass., and it is being televised live. May I have the pledge of allegiance? I'm sorry, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Here.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Petrie, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none. We are hoping to have the Winthrop High School Student Council. I think we'll need to push that off to another meeting.
We will. Games and whatnot will be brought involved with our students.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SPW 23-18 in the amount of $244,692.14?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 23-21 in the amount of $847,839.74?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Littieri?
I'm staying.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Staying.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to accept the Century Community Learning Center's internship enhancement grant in the amount of $38,218?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Swope. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. On the buildings and grounds, we have a request from the WMS PTO for a carnival block party and for the Winthrop Youth Soccer to have a soccer game. May I have a motion? We can take those together?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. On our subcommittee reports, we have a budget subcommittee tonight.
Yes. We had the last of several budget subcommittee meetings on April 5th, 4:00 PM, at the superintendent's office. Members present were myself and Ms. Petrie. Others in attendance were Lisa, Noel, and Karen Chavez. We discussed the topic of the 2024 budget. And we had one vote to take to recommend to the full committee to approve the needs-based budget, which at the time was $37,452,452,258. Now, we're doing it a little bit differently this year at the town because we're doing some shared costs, which they're moving on to our budget. And those numbers are kind of fluid. So it's changed. So what we're going to do is, we voted to approve that number. But I'll ask, Ms. Powell asks for a change in that number through our motion.
Yes, I would like, I would ask for an amendment to reflect the town's, the shift in the town's shared costs.
So make an amendment to change Mr. Martucci's needs-based budget from $36,187.06 to $36,644,103?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martucci. Any discussion on the amendment?
Can I just ask, Jim, you're talking now about the needs-based budget.
I think that's what Ms. Martucci is recommending.
So it's knowing the needs, all right.
And can you clarify what the items are that are no longer the school's responsibility and that are going to still be the town's?
There are several items on the list which will, which are school-related expenses, which has always been on the town's side. And now just shifting them to the school's side, for example, well, including group insurance, Medicare, workman's comp, unemployment, pensions for the school, property insurance, ed liability, flood insurance, ed liability for public officials, payroll, retiree health, and debt service on the school construction, and principal and interest debt service on the schools. So that number would be $9,208,432.01. So basically, it comes down to a, you know, basically 60% of the town's money will go to the schools, 40% will stay with the town for the town's budget. There were a few items in here. That number originally was $10 million and change. And there were a few items that were taken out that really weren't the school's responsibility. So we took, they were taken out by the town manager and the CFO. So the subtotal of those shared expenses are $9,208,432. And if you add that to the needs-based budget from the school committee, from the budget subcommittee, which was $27,435,671, that would bring a total needs-based budget up to $36,644,103.
With this amendment, the vote, the budget that we would be discussing is $36,644,103?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? The amendment passes. Now we are on the discussion of the budget. Is there any discussion on the budget as proposed?
No, you go first.
No, you go.
You, well, my question's pretty, whatever, it's a very general question. Will there be an opportunity at this meeting to talk about the difference between the needs-based budget and the level services budget? And what would be lost if the level services budget is the one that is accepted? And at what point do we have that conversation?
What we're, what we are voting on tonight is the needs-based budget, not level services budget.
Okay. So my understanding, though, is that the recommendation, if the school committee were to, if the school committee were to approve the needs-based budget, that then goes to the town council?
Correct.
Correct. And the town council just does an upper no vote on the needs-based budget?
No.
So I'll be meeting with the town council, I'll be meeting with the finance commission tomorrow to review the needs-based budget and to let them know what is in that budget. So for example, at the Gorman Fort Bank School, there's mandated items that are in the general budget, the level service budget, but the additional things that are in the needs-based budget are things such as adjustment counselor, reading specialist. At the middle school, there are seven positions in there, world language teacher, seventh grade teacher, sixth grade teacher. So I'll go through all of that with them so they have a clear understanding of, if the needs-based budget is not appropriated to the school, what are the things that we will not be able to put in? And if there's a level service budget, what are the mandates that weren't, that were put in throughout this year, special ed mandates, ELL mandates and the like, increase in contracts and services? And what does that look like? So it'll give them a clear distinction between, between the two. And I can, I'll share that same PowerPoint with the school committee tomorrow before I go to the FinCon.
Okay. And then the process is that then it goes, I'm just, these are kind of process questions?
Yeah.
And then it goes to the town council tomorrow evening?
No, so town, so the FinCon takes those items into consideration. They'll ask me a bunch of questions. They can follow up with questions with whomever they would like. And then they come to the town council at a future date and make a recommendation to the town council about how much funding should be allocated towards the school and why. And then in June, the town council hears from the town manager around about June 13th. He recommends his budget and they take into consideration his recommendations, the finance commission's recommendations, the school, the school district and other departments' requests. And they make the final appropriation of money per department.
Okay. So then the school committee will have an opportunity to figure out, to sort of review what the decision is?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the school committee is encouraged and the community is encouraged to come to any one of those meetings.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes, Ms. Swope?
What time is FinCon? 6 o'clock in this room here at the Harvey Room.
Yes, Ms. Martucci.
Ms. Leonard, just to let you know that if we do, if we do end up getting a level service budget and not the needs, nothing will be lost. It will be, we just won't be able to move the district forward with more services. Level service means you'll do exactly the same thing as you did this year next year.
Correct, right, I understand.
Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Littieri?
And, you know, level serviced is, the problem that the school's, the school department has is level serviced is one thing. So that basically, like Mr. Martucci said, you have the same as this year as you had last year. Unfortunately, the state is, you know, depending on the shift in, in students and type of students, there's going to be additional mandates that, you know, wouldn't have been had this year that will be next year that, you know, so it's still level serviced plus the mandates, which adds an increased amount of money. So the town is, you know, recommending a budget without the, without the change in services. Say the budget is about $2 million more than it was last year. However, a big chunk of that came because there was a change in Chapter 70 funding, right? Which is like 1.8 million of the 2.1. My, my original question is kind of in line with what Suzanne was talking about is, it's always, well, in the past, the school committees have always voted on needs-based budget because their job is to, you know, to advocate for the students. But I think, you know, it's also realistic to see what the reality is. But I think, you know, I'm hoping after the budget, the school committee will see what we can do to get to that needs-based budget, right? I mean, we don't want to, you know, the realization is that the number from the town probably won't be that needs-based budget. But we can't just say, okay, that's okay, well, like Ms. Martucci says, we're still going to offer everything we can to maintain it. But I think we have to then have educational meetings with the town and with its citizens to let them know what we're asking for, what these principals are asking for, and then find a way to get there. Instead of just voting for something that we know is probably a little unrealistic and then not getting it and then saying, okay, and doing the same thing, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over. Let's now get to the point where we can say, let's have an educational seminar and try to teach and to say, this is, this is why, you know, the school committee isn't just popping up a number out of the air. Lisa and her staff and Noel put in an incredible amount of time to come up with these numbers along with the help from the leadership team from the schools. And I think it's important that we share this information step by step to let people know that this is why we're asking for a needs base. We're not just asking for like pie in the sky budget. This is what we feel is a good foundational footprint to move us forward.
And I think, I could just respond to that one second, Jim, that's exactly, I think, what I was trying to suggest. And I also think if a conversation is not had along those lines, we're not making transparent what is not being funded and how to improve the schools. So I just want to sort of formally encourage us, whatever happens, and I think we have some sense of what might happen, I'd like to have a real conversation about what will not be able to happen if we have a level services budget. Because I, I would also say that I think there was some real excitement and enthusiasm for a lot of what's in the needs-based budget. And a lot of work has been done to create it, as you all have talked about. So I think it's really important that we honor the work that's been done to, as Mr. Littieri said, educate the town about what, what will not be able to happen. And I, and I think, you know, doing the same thing over and over again, the whole insanity thing is something, I believe I'm there at the insanity level because this is the fifth budget, or sixth, fifth, I think, that I've worked with the school department to develop. And we've gotten to a point with our needs-based budget in our recommendations and knowing that if we're unrealistic, we want people to listen to us and we want them to really understand that we're not fooling around. These are the things that we really feel strongly that we need. There are many more things if we want to talk about matching ourselves up to other school districts and having an equitable education to the comparable communities around us. And in thinking about that over the past, you know, month or so and speaking to individual school committee members, parents, students, and certainly the staff, the needs-based budget that you have is what we felt was an immediate need and realistic need that we believed, as we've done year in and year out, to no avail, that that is something that is understandable. When you sit down and you talk about, okay, that's an understandable piece that people can digest. When you do something five years in a row, and I'm sure that prior to me it was the same practice, and you never get there, trying to even add more to that, the sense that people are going to stop listening, we feel like we've had people at least listening. If we were to lay out what we really felt would put us where we need to be in the future in a manner that was put out there not for judgment but for clear understanding, I can tell you that on top of that needs-based budget, you would have $2,239,238 more dollars worth of positions. And just for the record, think, positions and items, so I'm just going to give you an example. There would be an additional two full-time secretaries to equalize our elementary schools. There'd be four curriculum coaches to be added to the elementary level on top of what we're already asking for. There'd be two additional adjustment counselors full-time at the elementary schools. We'd need an additional school psychologist at a bare minimum, two more ELL teachers. We would love to have two school resource offices so that we could have resource offices in every building. A technology director would be a beautiful thing. Two additional high school languages for our students to go beyond just Spanish. Two high school specialists to teach things such as medical careers, which we've been trying to get back forever, financial literacy, which is becoming more important every day. We would increase our custodial supplies. We would increase material supplies and curriculum at every school level. We would eliminate user fees for our student athletes to the tune of about $120,000. We would increase athletics for material supplies, uniforms. If, if school lunch being free goes away, we would be looking for $385,000 to cover the Aramok food service bill. And we would be looking for $259,650 to pay our staff. Couple that with $3,479,200 worth of capital expenses, and you have an increase over this needs-based budget at a bare minimum of $5,718,438. And that's a, those are estimates based on master's degree salaries on Step 3. And that is what I would say, or some people would liken to pie in the sky. I liken it to an equitable education across this Commonwealth with other school districts. It's been hard to do that. It's been hard to make all of those recommendations knowing that the town's revenue is not there to support that. So when we have done our needs-based budget, it's what do we really need to move our students step by step forward versus getting them to the finish line?
And if, Lisa, if you could just even mention about the grants, how many, how much grants we rely on, including ESAR grants and grants that might be going away?
So right now, we have 1.1 million 875,000 and change, and that's just in salaries. The grants that will be going away, COVID had left us with some terrible things, but it also left us with some nice things, which was three years' worth of ESAR funding. The ESAR 2 grant was a little over 2 million, a little, close to 2 million. And the ESAR 3 grant was three, a little over 3 million. We did a lot of one-time capital improvements in our schools to make sure that we didn't have to rely on that funding. But we have, we have embedded five salaries in the past two school years. And the grant, ESAR 3 grant is the only COVID grant we have left. And that grant disappears at the end of next year. We anticipated that. We used it for COVID mitigation in learning and learning loss recovery. Our entitlement grants, Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, Title 4, and the 240 Special Ed Grant, 85% of the money that comes in in those grants is allocated towards salaries. We hope that those grants are a little more stable than other grants. But all, all said and done, we're well over $5 million in grants. And 85% of that in, in the entitlement grants is salaries only. If those grants were to disappear, we would decimate probably 35 positions in the school district. That would have to go away if that money was not here. So that, you know, if you couple that with the total amount of money we spend per year, it's quite a bit. The unfortunate part of grants, and this is why we try not to put salaries in grants, is that Chapter 70 money is, is not, how much, how they figure the Chapter 70 allotment to a school is minus anything you're doing with grants. That's sort of a higher-level understanding of the grants. But I do think it's important for people to know that, you know, we, we could put a, like I said, a good $5 million more into a level service budget. We try to be realistic and we've been trying to climb the ladder. But the longer the runs break, the further apart you get. So I, I do feel that this information will be helpful when we start to think about the future for the schools.
Yes, Ms. Martucci.
So I know several years back, we had an override, a menu option override with the departments. Each department had a number and would build to that number, at least explain about the different costs that go along with it and what that final number is. And I think what Mr. Littieri is saying is that we're probably heading in that direction. You know, we've been heading in that direction for a few years, and we haven't done it. Obviously, it's the, or ultimately, it's the council's decision to put an override in the ballot. So we would have to do the work to show them what the need is. That's meetings, educating people, and then laying out these numbers and what's associated with those numbers as far as services and positions and stuff like that. So, and capital is huge. Something, you know, no one thinks of, because, you know, we've had new schools and we've been in good shape, but a couple of them get old now. So those are the things we have to look at. But we would have to have some meetings and some roundtables and all that stuff. We have the numbers. I mean, we have these numbers, these are hard numbers that Lisa and all of her staff have gone over and figured out for a long time, in a lot of years. And has a really, really good job, by the way, in doing that, dissecting these numbers and not just coming up with a, you know, a made-up figure. So that's the direction we're going in. And I think that the town manager is on board with that. I think he's, his vision is to do the same thing with the other departments also, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Just to thank you, I think this is the conversations we need to start having. So I just want to thank Mr. Martucci and Mr. Littieri for raising this. I think this gives me hope and, I mean, I'm willing to put in the time. I think we all are, so, well, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I'm certainly willing to put in the time. And I think this is a really worthwhile cause and it's obviously not going to happen overnight. So, but I'm really, I'm really heartened that the conversation's moving in this direction. So thank you all.
Yes, thank you to all the committee members who have put in a great deal of own time and to Ms. Howard for your analysis. And I know you were spending hours on the, even this afternoon, getting everything ready. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Ondy?
On the, the final budget number, the $36,644,102?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Littieri?
Staying.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we were off, some of us were off last week, but our students were off last week during April vacation. So I don't have a huge superintendent report, but few, few items. We will be, Winthrop Public Schools, along with Chelsea, Everett, Revere, and I believe Malden, are hosting a job fair on Wednesday at Chelsea High School. So it's a five-district partnership, getting together with us to recruit staff for all of our districts. So we will be attending all of our principals, including Mr. McInany, the new principal at the Gorman Fort Banks, Nick Bacheira, HR Generalist, the principals, myself and Laurie Gallivan, to recruit and woo people to come to our beautiful town. We will be doing on-the-spot interviews for the positions that we have open this year and the positions that we know will be open next year through retirements and any resignations that we have. So we're really looking forward to that, to gain some, some interest in our students. As many of you know, we had a terrible fire in the community at 91 Veterans Road on Friday. I have been in touch pretty consistently with Chief De La Hanty regarding that piece of property. There are multiple families that lived in there. And as of today, we know that we had a total of 11 children who had been displaced. The majority of those children are Gorman Fort Bank students, K1 and 2. We had a couple of students in the third grade and we had two students in the ninth grade. So the school district, in a case like this, just as in any case in the community, thankfully with the support of, of the town manager, town council, fire and police department, they automatically reach out to us so that we can put our triage mode on and get, get to the property and get to the families that are in there and begin the, the process of helping these families in any way they need. So a number of the families were, I know that over 100 families were displaced. They, they went to placements in East Boston and Saugus Hotels temporary. Our job is to, on the schools department and the way we work with our crisis management team and is to sit down and say, okay, what's your role in this? And so our role is to reach out to the families through our principals, teachers, our adjustment counselors, depending upon the grade level of the students, make contact with the family, let them know that we're aware of what's happening with them to sort of ease the burden of school and understanding of student attendance. Find out what they need in terms of transportation. They are technically considered homeless when you've been displaced. So it is the school department's responsibility to find the students and bring them to school back and forth to where they're temporarily housed. And we have been on that all day today, working out those logistics. The other piece of it is just making sure students have access to clothing, to food, working with some of the community. So the town side has put together different resources throughout the community, Mi'amore, the town health department, and a number of other groups. So as I gather the information through my adjustment councils about our students and their needs, and relay that back to the town. And then the schools also, we also have resources. We have amazing PTOs. We have resources from different fairs and events that we've done where we have gift cards for places like Target, places to eat. We also, through the Urozioni Foundation and some other foundations in town, we have access to clothing for, for parents and then just access to, just somebody calling and saying, we're here and we care about you. Student, some of the students were not able to get back into their property and some of the properties were so badly damaged, the apartments, that things were lost. So it is our goal to make sure that our students are well taken care of and they don't go without, whether it be a backpack, a Chromebook, or clothing, food, or a place to, to stay. So I think it's important for the committee to know the work that's been done on the ground to make sure that happens. And I was receiving calls, I heard it on my police scanner while I was in my office, but I started receiving calls from some of our administration saying, do you know what's going on? And let me know when, where, and how, that we can be of assistance. So we did manage to touch base with every family today. So we're working on that, more to come. But the town has also done an amazing job at facilitating. There were also animals that were on these properties, which for adults and especially for children can be extremely traumatizing. So our school adjustment counselors and, and others are working with the kids to, to help them through that as they're in school. Let's see, individual school updates, Gorman Fort Banks, spring photos around the 27th. So make sure you brush your hair and you look nice and you have your clothes on and you come in and you smile, most importantly. Having a book fair on May 3rd and 4th. And fun at the Fort starts on the 4th as well. So all of that information is on the Gorman Fort Banks website or through Ms. Pearson's weekly email. Coming school, we talked about this last week, or two weeks ago, but I'll repeat it. MCAS math prep classes are on Mondays and Thursdays for students who signed up or who were assigned. Math MCAS testing for grades four and five will take place on May 2nd and May 4th. And they have changed the date for student MCAS on, for And they have changed the date for students MCAS on, for grade three. We moved it up a little bit. We were able to move it up, which was helpful and just gives the teachers one or two extra days to provide some more support. And science testing for grade five will take place on May ninth and eleventh. Middle school, May third is their wellness fair. It's also an early release day. And period ends for term three progress reports on May fifth. The Winter High School Wellness Committee, I talked about us having Wellness Month, educating the, and students on the importance of nourishing and themselves, both mentally and physically and their overall well-being. I am excited to say that Wednesday, we are bringing in a speaker. The, the group is called the Sullivan Group. I happened to see this woman speak when my son was in high school, I think he was a junior. So Kathy Meyer began to speak about substance abuse, alcohol abuse, mental health and wellness, and the importance of making good choices back in two thousand and nine. This was after her daughter Taylor passed away from underage drinking after attending a homecoming game and a series of underage drinking parties. After a three-day search, Taylor was found drowned in two feet of water in the woods after getting lost from an outside party that had taken place in the woods behind someone's house. Kathy comes out and speaks, and, and for Taylor, and speaks about a message to kids around drinking and the, and leaving friends and being afraid to contact an adult. It, it may have been the most moving school assembly I've ever been to. You know, Ms. Meyer came in with a life-size picture of Taylor, who looked like every other high school young lady, and she talks about the trauma of realizing that people knew that her daughter had wandered off and that she was not well because she had been partying and, and drinking, only to three days later, find out she had passed away because she had drowned in a small amount of water. So Mr. Crombie and I were talking about it last summer and, and talking about sort of everything we hear about our kids in, in the schools and what else can we do to get this message to our kids? And we say, remember that lady? Remember that lady who came out? And Matt was a young teacher at that point. My son was in, my oldest was in high school. And I have not forgotten it. I can know what the lady looks like. So we had to research to find her. Because Matt wasn't a principal then. And we did some research and sure enough, we found her and sure enough, she's willing to come out. If the impact that it had on me is, is had on one child, then we'll make a difference. But if it had that type of an impact on me, it really must resonate with other people. So I'm thrilled that she's coming back. It is, it's emotional. We're going to prepare our students for that because it is, it is emotional when someone's mother stands up there. I remember she had a tattoo portrait of her daughter on her forearm, so she's kind of a cool mom that kids will look up to and listen to. And I'm hopeful that that message is clearly communicated with our kids and, and that her face in the picture of her daughter remind kids of making good decisions and staying healthy. The senior activities, I can't believe we're even talking about this because it reminds me that I'm going to have to write a speech. Really, I don't think anyone wants to hear on graduation day because they just want to see their kids graduate, but that's coming. So May twenty-sixth is going to be the last day of school for seniors. May thirtieth is the prom. All of these dates are on the high school website under the senior tag. May thirty-first is class night. June first is graduation rehearsal and June second, Friday, is graduation. Public relations, just quickly, congratulations to the high school scholars of the month, Madeline Forsyth and Chris Kearns. Congratulations to Boston Herald All Scholastics and Hockey, Emma and Julia Holmes, great honor. Congratulations to Boston Globe All-Stars and, Boston Globe All-Stars in Hockey, which is Emma Holmes and Peter Silverman. So the Globe and the Herald are two completely different honors. The Class of Twenty Twenty-Six is having a fundraiser at the Winter Arms on the, for, ten percent of the proceeds will go to the Class of Twenty Twenty-Six. There'll be raffles and a split apart. And congrats to our Elks, in the middle school, our Elk Students of the Month for March. Grade six is Ryan O'Leary and Raya Codewich. Grade seven is David Ibarra Betancourt and Mateus Alvarez. And then grade eight, Jack Antonelli Janey and Stefani Velasquez. And congratulations to Nick Bisher and Ally Jordan Nikazar, HR general, generalist. And Ally is a grade six teacher, I believe, at the middle school. They completed the Boston Marathon, which was pretty amazing to track them. Kindergarten registration is underway, so please take a peek at the transcript and also the Gorman Fort Banks website. Parents can pick up packets at the Gorman Fort Banks School and you can also download them on the GFB website. The Winter Parent Network is hosting Family Game Night on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at the Gorman Fort Banks School. The event is free. You can contact Bryn Durkee. Her email is on the middle school website, but it's B-R-Y-N-D-U-R-K-E-E at gmail dot com for an additional email address. Walk to School Day is May fifth, so get your walking shoes on. And a, a group that has been very generous to, to us as a school, year in and year out, the Zonta Club of Chelsea, is hosting a comedy night at Giggles on May eleventh. The show starts at eight o'clock and the tickets are thirty-five dollars. You can reach out to Elizabeth Farmer, seven eight one, three two two, seven four three oh. And if you need to get that again, you can call our office here at Town Hall and we can get you that information. So much for a short report, but that is it. Oh, oh, by the way, I left someone out. Lane Petrie, our own school committee member.
Yes, thank you.
Also ran the Boston Marathon. I was gonna run it, but I forget what happened. Something happened. I didn't, but congratulations to Lane. I can't believe I left you out. I just looked up and saw you. So I did text you, though.
You did.
To say good luck. So that's a huge accomplishment. I have a hard time running to the fridge, so. Congrats to you all. Imagine the awards banquet. Breakfast. I did not. Ten percent breakfast is on the floor. At eight-thirty in the morning at the Cottage Park Yacht Club. How did I miss that? Because it's written down right here. And that is, that is all I have.
Are there any homeschool applications?
I'll get back to my agenda. There are none.
And appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leaves of absence?
I just got to flip myself open here. So postings, we are posting a world language teacher for Spanish. And just to explain that, we didn't have a world language teacher, a Spanish teacher, last year. We had, we had one for about a week and then we, that person decided not to stay with us and we had a great deal of difficulty getting anybody else and we added a health and wellness class. Mr. Curly would like to bring back world language at this point in time in that position. So he would like to post for that position. The STEM teacher, Winter Middle School STEM teacher, that's due to a retirement. We are also approaching the time for summer school programming for both our extended school year program for students with special needs and additional tutorial classes that will run for students throughout the summer. And Gorman Fort Banks, pre-K to second, pre-K, pre-K and second grade teachers, anticipated openings, Ms. Pearson would like to post. And posting the anticipated openings is helpful when we do our job fair, so we can begin to collect resumes from staff. We do not have any leaves of absence.
Okay, and we have an anticipated vote on the school calendar?
Yes. This particular school calendar is similar to all of our school calendars in the past, where we have a start date before Labor Day. So the first day for teachers, full day professional development for teachers would be August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. First day for students would be Wednesday, August thirtieth. We would have them with us on Wednesday and Thursday, doing first day of school business, which is always pretty busy. And then we would have no school on, obviously for the holiday weekend, on Friday or Monday, and then return on the fifth, ready to go, with not filling out any paperwork, handing out anything, and just getting down to business on that particular day. And then the last day, anticipated last day for students would be June eleventh. But knowing me, I'll call a snow day when it rains, so add those five days in on the end and anticipate that we may be going the eleventh.
Can I have a motion to vote on the calendar as proposed by the administration?
Motion.
Second by Ms. Wob, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion?
Yes, on the, for winter break.
Yes.
The dates that are colored green for school being closed don't line up with the dates that are listed at the bottom. So the, it says the break goes through January third, but only through the first is colored green to indicate that school's closed.
Let me go to that.
For December to January. The bottom says holiday break, December twenty-third through January third, but only December, like the week of December twenty-third through January first is colored green. So the second and third are not colored green.
Yes, and they should not be. So it should be December twenty-third, which is actually a Saturday.
Yep.
Typically, we do, we do just the school days, so it should read the twenty-fifth through the first.
That's what I thought.
Returning on the second. We will correct that in the final copy.
The other thing I was going to say is November eleventh is also colored green, which is a Saturday. I know that it's, that is Veterans Day, but school would be closed anyway, so it's a little confusing there.
You know that the school calendar is the bane of my existence. We must redo the school calendar five or six times because something always comes up. So I appreciate you catching those.
So on the Veterans Day, would it, would it then be on Friday?
So Veterans Day.
Both Friday and Saturday are colored green on the calendar.
Okay.
So the Saturday needs to come off.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I didn't notice that. Thank you.
You're welcome. My other question was, not necessarily for this year, but for planning for the future, what, what is the likelihood of getting professional development days, not to be so many half-days throughout the year, but because we also talked about this in other conversations, just like the cohesion of getting all of the teachers in one place for a set amount of time?
Right.
And also for families to plan.
So we have the two full professional days at the beginning of the school year. We have one full professional day, that's our five district partnership, full day event in November. And then, so the question is, the half-days during the school year, the question is, why are we not having full professional development days instead of half-days? Good question. I don't know that we've talked about that that much. I know some of these half-days are obviously parent-teacher conferences. But I can bring that back to the, to the committee. And the committee is the curriculum director and the principals and talk about that.
I was just thinking, you know, thinking when I'm planning my own professional development for staff, we used to do partial days and by the time everybody shows up and you get everybody introduced it, then you only wind up with forty-five minutes left to talk about whatever topic it is. So we just started doing only full days, just for cohesion.
Can take that thought to them. I know that a lot of times when we're doing the PD, because of the different, the different hours, the different start times.
Us too.
And with the curriculum, with the focus on curriculum and trying to stay very focused on not having a lot of initiatives and, and, you know, due to initiative fatigue and really sticking to it, that the half-days that they were doing were very different in each building. Because they were, you know, wasn't, the full school, you know, was not participating in one except for on the seventh, when we do the first two days of school, when we do back to school business and all the mandatory trainings. And then the seventh of November, when we do the five district partnership, which is a myriad of, of offerings. But I certainly will talk to them about that. And if there's a way to do that, that may be more helpful, you know, for parents as well. Teachers may like it, too.
And I, the other thing about half-days, as I, with thinking about parents and their planning, half-days on Fridays often are easier for parents to plan work schedules around rather than a Wednesday. So if they do have to be a half-day, I'm wondering what the likelihood of making the half-day be on a Friday and staff might like that better, too.
So I, I know that that's been talked about. I can agree with that. So half-days on Fridays, I believe we had them probably three or four years ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
And I think it was, I think we switched them back to Wednesdays, believe it or not, to make sure everybody was focused, attending, and, and, and really engaged in what we were doing. Sometimes Fridays can be tough for people, so I do believe that was the reason, but it certainly can be.
I can understand that, too.
Yes, Ms. Wob.
I asked, I asked Lisa the same thi, actually, I asked Jim the same thing about Fridays, because we and I had talked about that also. But one of the, one of the issues may be that if it's only a half-day on Friday, some of the kids may decide that they'll take off that day for the weekend, have a longer weekend. So that's, or that could be a problem. Maybe it was before and maybe that's one of the reasons it was changed back to Wednesday. But I agree, Wednesday, Wednesdays are tough on working parents, half-days, Wednesdays.
We did, we did look at a bunch of different schools, too, at one point. And there are some schools that have half-days every single Wednesday throughout the calendar or every single Friday throughout the calendar. I worry about the half-days on Fridays for the extended weekends as, you know, as a parent, if you're trying to get up to New Hampshire and such, you want to leave at nine versus hitting tons of traffic at twelve. So for attendance purposes, you know, for staff, you can, you can nail that down a little easier than you can with families, you know, wanting to take off on Friday. So, but I certainly will bring it back to my leadership team and talk about that.
Yes, Mr. Lutteiri.
Now, in the PD, talking about if, if you did go to full days instead of half-days, don't you have to add those days back at the end of the year? So it's another reason that.
Yeah, students have to, have to be.
Yeah, students have to be in school a hundred and eighty days and staff has to, teachers are one eighty-three,
ESP is a one eighty-two.
They have an early end this year with June eleventh. It's pretty early in the year, anyway. There's a little wiggle room.
Depending on how much snow we have.
Right.
If any. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote to approve the calendar?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Petrie?
Abstaining.
Ms. Wob?
Abstaining.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And a vote on the hour, the school committee meeting dates for twenty-three? I think it's, it's supposed to be twenty-four, it says thirty-four.
Those do approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion?
Just, just to make a note that sometimes the dates, these dates can be flexible. We like to have a starting point. They're built around the warrant and around the, your need to sign those warrants in order to get payroll done and make sure we're paying our bills.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We have no unfinished business. We've done public relations. Any additional public relations?
I would just like to piggyback a little bit on the fire on Ninety-One Veterans Road. And, you know, it was a terrible tragedy for, for many families. It had seventy units there that were affected. We had fifty-one, I think fifty-one residents that have been displaced into, I mean, they've all been displaced, but fifty-one residents, we, you know, found shelter for, hotels for, as the superintendent said. But an incredible thank you to the Winter Fire Department, Winter Police Department, the Winter Medical Reserves, the CARES team and Lieutenant Sacco, Inspection Services, the superintendent for her help. I know public health has been there. Miyamore has been incredibly generous. You know, I was at the senior center with the families and the town manager and a few other counselors were there and the town manager just went above and beyond. It, it just shows what a special town Winter is. A tragedy like that just brings a lot of people together and they're always there for us. So I do thank them for that. And, you know, our hearts, I'm sure, as a school committee, go out to all the families that have been affected.
Thank you.
Fort Banks has a spring social on Friday, the twenty-eighth, and then they're having a game night, I think, the following Thursday. I could be wrong about that, but there's a, they have a family game night. And then kindergarten registration, I think, opens May eighth, which is only like a week and a half away.
And that's on the schools website as well.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, seconded by Mr. Martucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.